Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 23, 2020 board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I heard you. Once again, good evening. First, on behalf of the school board, we want to say thank you to our patrons for understanding and adhering to the modification of the board meeting. Huge thankful, thank you to everyone who made it possible for the board to physically or virtually be present while ensuring that we follow the guidelines of social distancing. I could sit here and thank so many people, but if I were, if I were to list names, you know, we'd be here longer than needed. It's not to take away from our, your individual contributions, but to acknowledge what happens when we work together as a team. We have definitely fallen into new circumstances in the past two weeks. This has felt like the longest march in history, but I want to say thank you to Dr. Lewis and ELT, ELT staff, students and families for their patience and cooperation as we navigate these, this new circumstance that has come our way. This often reminds me of our students entering schools for the first time, whether it's kindergarten or English language learners. They don't know what to expect, but they learn the rules and adjust to the new rules. But for the most part, we make it in the end. We can make it and get through this if we remember to be kind to one another, be aware of the privilege that you may have, and if possible, help out those who, who are struggling, whether it's socially, financially, emotionally, a simple phone call, tweet, Facebook message, a letter, it makes a difference during this time. Seniors, I wish you weren't in this situation, but we are so proud of you and your accomplishments. You have had quite the year. It may not mean much now, but I know that the board supports Dr. Lewis's efforts in trying to make sure we get to celebrate you all and you get to walk in front of your loved ones when this is over. Finally, if you did not know already, Lawrence Kids Magazine so graciously offered to celebrate our seniors on Tuesdays and Thursdays starting tomorrow, alternating between both Lawrence High School and Free State. You can send in a picture of your senior as a baby, a kid, and a current photo, along with some, a few things you'd like others to know about them, and you can send that via email to info@lawrencekidsmagazine.com. I sent some photos of my senior and one that was long overdue. I couldn't wait to show that picture of her as a kid, so as them, of them as a kid. So once again, thank you, and I will turn it over to Dr. Lewis.
All right, good evening, everyone, board members that are present. This is unusual times. Thank you to Shannon and Erica for joining on, online as well. I just have a few comments.
Carol's up there, too.
Carol, okay, I didn't see your picture, so thank you also.
Yeah, I am having a little difficulty.
Oh, you're on the phone, okay. All right, thank you also, Carol, for, for joining. Several of our elementary schools hosted drive-by teacher parades today. Those were very well received by families, and it just provided an opportunity for our teachers to see their scholars and just roll through the neighborhood. No one got out of their cars or anything like that, but the excitement and just the expressions on some of our students' faces, a lot of waves, smiles, sidewalk chalk messages for our teachers as they drove by, as many had signs, banners, and even some instruments. And so we are ready to connect with our families online, and unfortunately, we have to do that, but nothing can replace that face-to-face interaction of our teachers. Our food services staff, administration, and teacher volunteers, which I cannot say enough about them, the number of staff that reached out to volunteer, the number of staff that volunteered, definitely can't replace any person in the military actually putting their lives on the line for the country, but I would say they put their lives on the line for our students to ensure that they, they were fed. And so to date, we've served close to 5,000 school breakfast and lunch meals since last Monday, and about 1,600 of those were delivered to home doorstops for families that were lacking transportation. Two Kansas City TV stations followed me on one of the days that I did some meal delivery routes and interviewed me, and so we definitely appreciated, appreciative of our local media getting the word out about our plans. Our district and school administrators have been working diligently last week on the initial aspects of our plan for continuous learning opportunities for students. This week, they have this entire week to work to develop our, what our continuous learning plan would, would, would be. So our schools are hosting virtual meetings with our teachers for more planning and professional learning so that we can begin to reconnect with students and families beginning March the 30th. I was interviewed by the student editors of The Budget and Free State Press. The interview was taped and shared on social media. I did send the link out in our Friday update, but it is on our social media website, and just wanted to have an opportunity, I think we spent close to two hours on Zoom or Google Hangout, and I just wanted to answer the many questions and wonderings that they, that they had. Rochelle Valverde, did I get that correct?
Valverde.
Valverde is here tonight from Lawrence Journal World. Welcome back, Rochelle. We are working on our plan for continuous learning opportunities for our students, and we look to call a special board meeting early April, somewhere around April 1st or 2nd, for the board to review and approve before we send it on to the Kansas Department of Education. They gave us a tight timeline, and it's a tremendous amount of work that our staff are, engaging staff in this week to, to put into that plan, and so we definitely want to put it in front of the board before we send it to the State Department of Education so they can vote on it. I do want to commend the Kansas State Department of Education under the leadership of Randy Watson, Commissioner Randy Watson. We've been having daily Zoom meetings, and he's been, he and his team have been doing a really good job of making sure that we have all the information that we need at the local level to continue to tread these unwatered, I'm sorry, tread these uncharted waters that we've never had to experience before, but they've been providing a tremendous amount of port, of support, both the Kansas Department of Education and our public health authorities at the state and, and local level. We try to keep our community updated, definitely kudos to our entire executive, executive leadership team. We've also been meeting daily since last week, some in person, but majorities has been virtual, and they've been just a jewel to, to work with during, during this time. Julie has been tremendous in terms of sending out communication and making sure that our parents and families are communicate, receive adequate communication. And as you know, we've dedicated a website to a lot of these updates, and it's usd497.org/coronavirus. And I too want to, want to echo what Board President Johnson when it comes to our seniors and all of our students, really, but when you think about our seniors, I think I read somewhere that they were born around 9/11 during, during that time, and graduate around 2020 during what we're currently experiencing. And what I want to say to our parents and teachers, thank you for your flexibility, but most importantly, we recognize that we have some parents that are also working from home, so that may be new for them, and on top of that, have to teach their, their children. And so we recognize that and definitely understand what this means for our, many of our families. Likewise, our teachers are working from home, and many of our teachers have children of their own, that they're responsible not only delivering instruction to our USD 497 scholars, but also to their children is, as well. And I just wanted to read this. I posted this on social media this, this morning, but I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to reiterate it again, and it just simply says, "Dear parents, there is no academic emergency this week, so don't be so quick to set up homeschool. Our country is in crisis, and we are all stressed and tired. Stressed adults cannot teach stressed children. It is neural, it is neurobiologically impossible, so try focusing on connections and feelings of safety." And that's, we, we've shared with our, our teachers, yes, our e-learning will begin on, on Monday, but families can rest assured they won't be bombarded with academics. It's about reconnecting and checking in on our, on our scholars and our, our families, likewise for our teachers as well, and we will go slow with this, but making sure that our students do receive definitely academic benefit from this as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. You have board commentary? Shannon?
I have a couple of things I wanted to share. There was actually quite a bit going on between our last board meeting and when this crisis really started to come to the forefront, but most importantly, I, I wanted to take just a moment to thank our USD 497 staff and students who helped put together all of the programming for the district showcase that we held in the district on March 6 for the Kansas Association of School Boards Board of Directors meeting. I was so incredibly proud of our district and so excited to show off all the great things that, that we are doing, and our staff and our students were just amazing. And so I didn't get a chance to, to thank everyone with everything else that's been going on in person, but I, I just wanted to, to make sure I shared just what an amazing job everyone did and how wonderful all of those efforts were received by the members of the KASP Board of Directors. Likewise, we had our, our business meeting at College and Career Center on Saturday the 7th, and I want to thank Melissa for coming to that meeting and, and just, it was really nice to have you there, and I appreciated all of the support that I got from everyone in the district, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon.
Go ahead.
Anymore? I, I just wanted to kind of share, I did have the opportunity, I think it was Friday, to do the grab and go at Hillcrest, and just the, the faces on the teachers as they were able to pass out the breakfasts and lunches to their students, and the, seeing the students' faces light up, and we even got little, received little cards of saying thank you. So I just wanted to kind of echo that. I got to witness that firsthand and just see how much our teachers miss their students and, and vice versa, and just the plans, kudos to Hillcrest. I just saw that they had that resources ready, and parents were asking, and, you know, they were just thinking ahead and again, knowing to take that time and pace ourselves, so just want to tackle that. Any other board commentary? GR?
I'll just, I'll just say one thing. I know that, you know, I've got, I've got a couple of kids in my house that are scholars in the, in the district, and, you know, I think, Dr. Lewis, you can correct me, which I'm sure you just probably throw something at me, but, you know, I think, I think currently now, as we get closer to next Monday, that there's a lot of information out there coming from all sorts of different directions about what e-learning is gonna, gonna, going to look like, what distance learning is going to look like, and I think that, I think what I would tell people is to just, you know, be, be patient with us, be calm, and just wait for official communications that come through the district, through official communication channels that you know, that you've heard communications from before, things that you hear through other channels, through social media, through Facebook, through whatever. If it's, if it's not from the district, if it's not an official communication, then I would just take it with a grain of salt, that we, you, you won't have any doubt of the information. When we are ready to send it to you, we will send it to you.
Thank you.
Any other board commentary? Well, Paula?
No, I just appreciate, because I have kids in the district also, the constant communication, and sometimes they receive it before I do, and so they're coming to me and telling me what the district is saying, which I appreciate that, and I appreciate their, Dr. Lewis, you letting our kids know, our students know what's going on. I think it really shows how proactive they are being themselves. Thank you.
Definitely. And I think we had one board commentary, and
Patron.
Patron commentary, sorry. And we can probably address that as you present the special meeting. It was just basically asking about Power School and how
Yeah, I think he's ready to
Address that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Joe, I think we're ready for our patron commentary. Oh. So to ensure that the public still have, still have an opportunity to participate in meetings such as this, we send out communication for any patron that still wants to participate in public comment, we will send you a link, and we sent the information out to email Dawn Downing that you want to participate, and we will email you the link so you still can participate virtually during patron commentary.
I think he's ready.
Sent the link.
There's no connection. There's nobody on.
Oh.
If he comes on at any point during the meeting, let, let us know.
So we, we'll address that a little bit later. Please stand by.
I want to recognize our retirees this week and thank them for their service. I know this is an unusual time to retire, and, and likely, folks didn't get to say the goodbye that they would have liked to, so I want to acknowledge that and really just say that we appreciate your service. So our, thank you to Michelle McAnderson for 14 years of service, Brenda Shear for 11 years of service, Mary Lopez for 27 years of service, Becky Pittman for 36 years of service, Scott Smith for 12 years of service and devotion to our community and its schools, and Rachel Stoller, we, for eight years of service. Thank you so much to our educators and staff for all the support that you've brought our students, and I wish you a joyful retirement.
So we will move to consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any, I can, I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kedu Blackwood.
Yep, she needs to You have to unmute.
Carol, you have to unmute.
Carol, can you unmute? Can you shake?
Oh, you can shake your head, yes.
Give us a thumbs up.
Can you hear us, Carol? Thumbs up? You're still on mute. If you could give us a thumbs up that you, or
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Thank you. At this time, we, we have order of new business. We will have Dr., is she gonna come on?
No, just as, as needed, if there are any questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Dr. Lewis will speak to the USD 497 graduation requirement modification.
Yes, as part of, of course, the schools are out for the remainder of the year. We were asked by the State Department of Education, Randy Watson, to look at our credits that we're currently offering. We do know, our number of credits, we do know that some school districts are offering more than a minimum required of 21 by the state, and we are indeed one of those districts. We currently require 23, and so what we want to bring to the board tonight is just a, a motion that will give us the opportunity to, for this remainder of this school year, to relax our current required credits from 23 to, to 21. In that case, if there are some students that are, and I shared this with the students that we'll be bringing this to the board, if there are any students that already meet that requirement, then obviously they would be done for the year.
And to clarify, Dr. Lewis, for the students that are not done, like they have, you know, maybe a half credit for ELA, will they be only taking those courses?
Yes, yes, so they'll just finish those courses. If, if it's only two of the core courses that they need, then they would just be responsible for completing those courses.
I, I got that question from seniors. They asked about core classes. They'll, they're still responsible for those classes. Thank you.
Any
Yeah, so, so they don't get to pick which two requirements they don't, they get to drop from 23 to 21. It's two electives that were
Right, they have to have the required core classes, and the core, core classes are listed. We have to, students have to have four, an ELA, three in social studies, three in science, three in math, one in PE, and one in fine arts.
Do we have numbers of
That would alter the number of ELA.
Do we have numbers of who
Got some preliminary numbers. I don't want to publicize them
Oh, okay.
To, to ensure that they're accurate, but the numbers I have are assuming that everyone will get their credit at the end of, at the end of the semester.
Okay.
So based on preliminary numbers, we have over 600 that already have 23 or more.
With their core classes. So can we get a motion to?
Is, I don't know if Anna was on, if she wanted to add anything? Was Anna on?
She was.
Paula, do you have a motion?
Anna, did you want to add anything?
Sorry.
Can you make the motion?
No, I think you covered it. One of the questions that came up that when we created the recommendation, which was there are a few juniors who actually already have 21 credits, well, that's some preliminary information, and we just haven't navigated through that, so that may be something that comes up later. When we created it, we were thinking about seniors, but there are a few at both high school, not double-digit numbers at each high school that probably could technically qualify to graduate, so we just would have to navigate through that.
I see.
I can live with that.
So essentially, they probably take core classes most of the time.
They'll be offered the opportunity to graduate as well then by that standard, or are you going to provide individual consultation to those kids and family?
We'll provide individ, yeah.
Okay.
So each family can make the best decision for their scholar.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because some of them may want to come back and experience their last year in high school.
Yeah. More questions?
Yeah, I make a motion for USD 497 graduation requirements to 21 credits.
Can you
Did you see the motion on the, I think we have the
Okay. I move the Board of Education approve the change of graduation requirements from 23 to 21 credits for 2020 seniors. The change of graduation requirements will sunset at the end of 2019, 2020 school year.
Can I get a second?
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kedu Blackwood?
Yes.
The motion passes, 7-0.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to our graduates.
Congratulations, seniors.
Congratulations.
I think my daughter's done, so.
I think on the board, there are four seniors this year.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not gonna tell her, though.
Until we meet again.
To thank our 18 people that are watching. Thank you for joining us.
Awesome.
Yes. Can we get a motion to?
Just to make sure we don't have the other gentleman on before we adjourn?
Oh.
Okay.
But we should be able to address those logistics in our special meeting, so apologize, but
We have his contact information. We can follow up.
Yes. Thank you. Now can I have a motion to adjourn? That was the fastest board meeting ever.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.